Board of Education, special meeting Tuesday, July 27. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Matthews.
Mr. Robert Cardillo.
Present.
Mr. Donald Doss.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Avaya Jr.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Anthony LaFolla.
Here.
Mr. Louis LaFolla.
Here.
Mr. Danielle Padula.
Here.
Mr. Chris Sallati.
Here.
Okay, may we have a motion for the executive session? So, second. Okay, in the executive session, we will have deal with contracts, secretaries, Utica Teachers Association, SPOs, personnel, and litigation. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, I mean, and other opposed? Okay, so we will be back by 6:30.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would somebody get our board person, Mike?
Yes. Maybe the Vice President can...
No, he doesn't have a job. She is... Joseph.
Mr. Robert Cardillo.
Present.
Mr. Donald Doss.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Avaya Jr.
Present.
Mr. Anthony LaFolla.
Here.
Mr. Louis LaFolla.
Here.
Mrs. Danielle Padula.
Here.
And Mr. Chris Sallati.
I am here.
Okay, presentations on the reestablishment of the Career and Technical Education Program and classes onsite at Proctor High School. Superintendent and Terry.
Thank you, Mr. LaFolla. Hello to the Board of Education and our administration and guests here tonight. Tonight is a very, very exciting night for the Utica City School District. Tonight, we are announcing a plan that will reestablish the CTE programs up at Proctor High School, the ones that used to be there back up until the late 80s. Proctor had them, UFA had them, Utica Free Academy, and then they went to BOSI's, and now we're going to be bringing them back. We have surveyed students over the years. We have talked to parents, we have talked to staff, teachers, counselors, and basically the feedback that we received was that an onsite program would be very beneficial to our students for many reasons, some of which are scheduling purposes, be easier to schedule students with their other classes, they could be with their friends, our own teachers and our own support staff, guide as counselors, social workers, teacher assistants can assist in these programs and support the students so that the student outcomes would be better, we would see, what we would see, a higher passing rate, that's, you know, based on the data and the things that we have collected over the last couple of years on this, and we started planning it. So tonight, we're going to start and present to the Board of Education and the public a couple of PowerPoints. The first PowerPoint I will be doing, which is the academic and reestablishment of the CTE programming up at the high school. Mr. Terry Damon, project manager for some of our projects, is here to, with his PowerPoint, going through the construction phases and some of the paperwork processing. And we also have with us tonight the architect from some of our other projects, Jeff Klotzer from Stiglitz. So we've been planning this along with some of our central office staff for tonight, and here we go. The Utica City School District has begun the process of reestablishing its own onsite career technical education CTE programs that are currently offered at BOSI's in order to better meet the needs of our large population of diverse learners and to increase the opportunities for students to participate in career and technical education CTE programming by offering them right at Proctor High School. On-site career and technical education program offerings. The Utica City School District is pursuing the following career and technical education programs to be offered onsite at Proctor High School. Automotive technology, automotive body and repair, construction trades, which include carpentry, electricity, plumbing, masonry, culinary arts, cosmetology, drone technology, cybersecurity, early childhood education, and criminal justice. The rationale for reestablishing onsite career and technical education programming. On-site career and technical education classes were once the cornerstone of the educational programming offered to students attending high school in the Utica City School District. Courses in the trades and other occupations were historically offered at both Proctor High School and Utica Free Academy, and then were moved to BOSI's following the consolidation to one high school in the late 1980s. On-site programming at Proctor High School would be beneficial to our students as these courses were and still are of great benefit to our students as they provide meaningful skills and competencies towards a career and an everyday life. Rationale, continuing the rationale for reestablishing. Feedback from students, parents, teachers, counselors, principals has indicated that student enrollment in onsite career technical education classes will increase significantly, especially among students who want to take such courses and do not wish to leave their high school during the day to travel nearly 30 minutes to and from BOSI's. Remaining onsite will also allow for greater flexibility in student schedules and course Offering these classes onsite at Proctor High School will provide greater access to our most diverse students, along with our students with disabilities, English language learners, our refugees, and our most at-risk students. Offering these classes onsite would also enable us to assist these students with our own support staff assigned to the school, such as counselors, social workers, translators, teacher assistants, parent liaisons, academic coaches, et cetera, in order to help ensure that the academic success, in order to help ensure the academic success of our students. Internal operation, supervision, and oversight of our own onsite CTE programming at Proctor High School would help ensure higher student performance outcomes, including attendance, academic achievement, and high school completion, which will increase our graduation rate. This will help the Utica City School District to directly address its current designation as a targeted support and improvement TSI district under federal and state school accountability regulations, which is due to our current off-site student placements. Our administrative staff is currently preparing applications for the approval of these career and technical education CTE programs through the New York State Education Department. We are working with our architects, project manager, to prepare planning documents for the construction of a new wing onto Proctor High School to house the career and technical education programs, along with the required infrastructure and equipment for each program. Next step, the Utica City School District has secured the support of Oneida, Herka, or Madison BOSI's to reestablish our own onsite career and technical education programming at Proctor High School, which will speed up the approval process. Upon approval by the New York State Education Department, our Board of Education, and the public, our goal is to have Proctor High School's new CTE wing completed and the career and technical education programming in place for September 2024. Upon approval of this project, the Utica City School District will be reaching out to the trades unions, unions in construction, electrical, plumbing, and masonry to forge a partnership that will afford our students with opportunities for job shadowing, apprenticeships, and job placement upon graduation from Proctor High School. The reestablishment of our own career and technical education programs onsite, along with the addition of a new CTE wing at Proctor High School, is an exciting venture that will be a source of great pride and of tremendous value to our students, teachers, parents, and the community, as well as the benefit to our local businesses, such as the construction Accomplishing the goal of reestablishing these courses onsite in a new state-of-the-art facility at Proctor will mark another significant milestone achievement of the Utica City School District, designed to enhance the opportunities of our students and to bring our educational programming and facilities into the 21st century. And I want to add this one thing before I turn it over to Terry, Mr. Terry Damon, our project manager. This is going to be done with no tax increase to the local taxpayers of the city of Utica. Mr. Damon.
I have to say, it's a pleasure to be back this evening. I've been gone a long time. COVID changed a lot of things, and it's nice to see so many familiar and smiling faces. And what a great opportunity to come back to talk about such an exciting program. As Mr. Karim has said, we've been working closely with the district, his administrative staff, with the architect, to put together some preliminary plans and to kind of kick off the planning process. You'll see in your superintendent's report tonight, the appointment of the seeker consultant, which is one of the first steps in the process, so we're excited to be here and happy to share some information that goes kind of hand in hand with what the superintendent just shared. As the superintendent said, career and technical education has been in the district for a number of years. This slide was put together to provide an overview for those that will see this PowerPoint presentation that will be posted on your website, to give them some information and a description of what CT is, what it stands, what CTE is, what it stands for, and what it's going to accomplish in terms of the programs being brought back to Proctor High Some pictures of some of the programs that are being proposed, with the construction activities, culinary, early childhood development, auto body and repair, just to give you some sense for what this program would bring to the district. Key next steps, Mr. Karim mentioned the submission to BOSI's for a letter of support, which has been received. We've started the preliminary plan submission preparation with the architect and with the superintendent's administrative staff. We are working to have that submission made to SED in early August. One of the main reasons we need to do that is get the plans in front of SED, have them review the plans, so they can help calculate what the building aid is going to be for the construction and renovations to be done at Proctor High School. I mentioned the seeker and SHIPO approvals. The seeker consultant would be appointed tonight, and they would be handling that process as they have in the past for the district. Orientation, the red box indicates the location where the addition would be built, which is across the driveway from the tennis courts. It kind of wraps into the loading dock area across from the auditorium, and then you can see the existing technology wing that's adjacent to where the new addition would be placed. This shows how it would tie into the first, second, and third floors of the main building, which is really a two-story addition. So you'll see the first, first-floor connection, second-floor connection, and then what would be the roof area, if you will, for the third and fourth floors, again, to give you some context in terms of where it fits within the overall Proctor High School campus. On the right-hand side...
Terry, I have a question. We used to have the old auto mechanics. Are we incorporating that in that area, or is that...
We're gonna, we're gonna actually...
Is there anything in there? Because I imagine you looked, I mean, is that...
We are. We're gonna convert that to the construction trades area.
Right.
We're gonna build a new area for the auto body. We need some additional head height in that area for the lifts. So the, on the right-hand side, you can see where it says, "Construction Trades." The areas that are hashed, that have the lines through them, that's the existing technology wing of the building. And that includes everything in blue, which would be the construction trades area, and then there's one section of the culinary arts program that would be in the existing tech wing that would be renovated as a part of the program. The other area that's not shaded would be the new addition. So on the first floor, as this is shown, would be four auto tech-related, the auto body, auto repair, auto body shop, cosmetology, and two labs, and then two culinary art components that go along with the renovated space. And then the left-hand side of the screen would be the second floor, and that would include different components. I can't read them all from here. Criminal justice, early childhood development. You'll also see some interchangeable classrooms that will provide for some expansion if need be and some flexibility with what the superintendent talked about in terms of other scheduling opportunities for students. And that's the way the floor plan would lay out. Preliminary project budget and finance, and it's important that everybody stands, this is preliminary information. One of the things we have to do is go to the State Education Department. They have to review the concept plans we have. They have to run their numbers, if you will, and once we hear back from them, we'll make some final adjustments in these numbers. The numbers that have been presented are based upon some of our past history here in the district, working again with, with district staff to put together the existing utilization plan for all of the classrooms at Proctor High School. That's part of what SED wants to see, and then we show them what the, with the new construction renovations, what the utilization would be. So our preliminary projection would be a total project cost of $14,850,000, which almost ironically is similar to the investment that the district made in the outdoor athletic improvements. So since we've been involved here with the district, every component of the district has been touched. We've reprogrammed, grade reconfiguration, we've done significant renovations in all of the buildings, we've updated the outdoor athletic facilities. This is really, as the superintendent said, this is really the final piece. To bring CTE back to the district would really complete all of the work for Utica City School District, so you would be well positioned going into the next 20 years. We're showing a building aid calculation of $9.85 million, which would leave theoretically a local share of $5 million. Again, those numbers will be confirmed with, checked with, and adjusted as necessary once we hear back from SED. What's important to note, as the superintendent said, retiring debt will allow the district to do this work at no tax increase to the taxpayers. The schedule that we have put together is fairly aggressive, but it's for a reason. When we built the Kernan addition, this building, this was a similar timeline, and since COVID, it's very important that we get the project defined, quantified by SED, and get it to the voters this year, so we can start the design process, so we can get plans to SED, so we can get them approved, and we can get to the bid market, so we can start construction in April of '23. And it's exactly what we did here, which positioned the district very well to really maximize the investment, because we did the foundations in April, we put the steel up in the summer when the students were not here, and closed the building in the fall, and all of the trades that are typically busy in the summer doing work in other districts had the opportunity to work through the fall and winter to work on the building. So that's the same approach we want to utilize here. We think it'll give the district the best bang for the buck, the best window in which to do this construction. So the seeker consultant would be hired this evening. The preliminary submission to SED that we mentioned, our goal is to have that to SED by August 9. Seeker steps, you have to declare yourself lead agent. There are some actions there that are required as a part of that. Everything leading up to, and in that timeframe, we would hear back from SED, we would know what the aid numbers look like, we would update those numbers for you. You'd have an opportunity to look at that in September. And then at the August board meeting, to make a referendum vote date in December, at the August 26 board meeting, you would be adopting your seeker resolution, and you'd be adopting the resolution to authorize a vote to be held in December. And this is really the same timeline that we were on previously. I would like to add that your bond counsel and your financial advisors have also been involved in the early discussions and meetings that we've had, so they're fully up to speed with where we are, what we're doing, so they're engaged and ready to go to keep the process moving. We would go to design, and then we would look to bid contracts in that timeframe, start work during April break, and then have the facility ready for the '24, '25 school year. That concludes our presentation. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Oh, wait, Chris.
Actually, it's more, more of a comment than, than anything else. First of all, Terry, I'm glad to see that you're going to continue to stay with us. You've done such an amazing job throughout our, our project, and Don will tell you, when we first started our capital project, was it 11, 12 years ago, and we were in Albany, and they were telling us, "No," and we said, "We got a secret weapon that will get us to the end of our project on time and under budget." Didn't know you then, but you certainly told us, helped us, and put us in the right direction, and I have to tell you, it was amazing. And now here we go on something that's so cutting-edge, and here we are, offering our students, as we always have, some opportunity, true educational opportunities, and I have to say, I'm glad to see that we're doing this. I don't think BOSI's, and I'm not telling tales out of school here, ever treated our students as well as they should have. And I think that by bringing it back into, into our district, that it's really going to allow us to offer our students a life skill. Even if they don't go into trades, they're still learning a life skill. But not, not to mention the fact that when we, and you know this, we had so many meetings during the capital project with the unions and how they were explaining that nobody's going into trades anymore, and they were explaining that within the next 10 years, you're gonna see, there's been a reduction, but you're gonna see a significant increase in wages for people that were in the trades. And we're seeing it now, because there's nobody in it, and there's not enough, there's not enough people. You go to any union home, there's not enough masons, there's not enough carpenters. We saw it on our, on this project here, I think...
That's right.
As well.
That's exactly right.
So, but I think one of the reasons why many students that would have gotten involved is because they had to leave the campus, and nobody wants to leave their friends. They don't want to go with, like I said, I think there was some issues with our students at BOSI's as well. And at the end of the day, by allowing us to control it, I think we'll offer a better education product for them. I really do, and better facilities. So I think that at the end of the day, this is really going to be something. Now, it looks like we're going to have cosmetology, obviously all the trades, which is plumbing, electrical, masonry as well, and carpentry. I can remember when I was in high school, we had the auto mechanics, which we used to bring our cars to get fixed, because that's who the students worked on, other students' cars, and it was really helpful.
Mr. Birch.
And Mr. Birch, yes. He was a nice guy, and...
Auto Body, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, we had that, and I remember they used to build a house every year, and it's really something, and the students take a lot of pride, and they're learning something. Many of our students, obviously, are tactile learners, given the fact that their, their English is a second language and different cultural issues or whatever, but, you know, I think the trades and using and learning this type of trade transcends beyond all of the, all of the different personalities and all the different types of students that we have from different countries. So I guess I can't say enough about it, but this is really something, and like I said, we've all grow, grew up, I know I'm probably showing my age, where we had shop, and we had home economics and all of that, and they were life skills, and we don't have them anymore. So this is a real opportunity for our students to really, and to learn a trade, not only a life skill. So I'm pretty excited about this. This is pretty amazing.
Anthony.
Thanks very much. Terry, good to see you again.
You too.
As always. Just help me understand, why is there a one-year gap between the referendum vote and then the bid award contract? Is that by law that we have to do that, or...
That's a timeframe that allows the architect to put the contract documents together, get them to SED, and then we would recommend paying for their expedited review, so it's the design permitting process with SED, that's what that window is.
So it could take up, up to a year to do that?
It can. And if we can get done sooner, then we'll, we'll, we'll want to get this out to bid as soon as we can.
Sure.
The earliest, the sooner we get into the marketplace, and I think the timing we have is perfect, as I said previously, the window we have set up is going to provide us with a great opportunity to attract bidders, because it's going to fill that fall, winter, spring work window that they all look to try to stay busy.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Terry, thank you. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Very, very nice job. I just want to echo and agree with everything that my colleague Chris said. I'd also like to add that this is really helping the economy of this community. I mean, this is an economic engine. If you think about it, with a lot of our students that want to go to work after high school, they're not, many of them are not going to college, they really don't want to go to college, and these are going to be skills that they can use and walk into a, walk into a position. As we know, what's going on up at, up at the airbase with cybersecurity and drone, the drone industry, I mean, this is a fantastic opportunity for these young people to come out with a skill and get a job, and not just a job. We're not talking about working at McDonald's. We're talking about really good, high-paying jobs. I represent a company up at the base, an aircraft company, and I mean, they're paying $35 an hour just to walk in. So I commend you, Mr. Karim, for, for putting this forward, and, and your staff for doing a fantastic job, and as I said, we're, we're going to help the economy of this community by helping these young people. So... Thank you. I'd just like to make note that I think this is a fantastic initiative. Finally, we are basically going to meet the needs of the school district's large population of diverse students, and these are young people who don't have the know-how to contend to go to colleges or community colleges. They're going to learn a trade, and, and it's going to open up the, the trade industry as well as working with business. Sure, BOSI's has provided it in the past, and many of us, some of us recall the trade school, where different individuals worked in different trades and weren't able to attend college. But the interesting part of it is, this is going to be right on the Proctor campus. I mean, they're not going to have to travel in a bus to go to another place, they're going to be right there, learning that trade, and as Chris said, you know, when you talk about cosmetology, or plumbing, or masonry, electricity, that's, that's the, the key to everything, to ensure that we're offering something that's going to open up the 21st century. And Utica is, is great to be present in that individual. What I like about the proposal is we're going to have the same people, Terry Damon, Jeff, Mike Ferrara, people that oversaw the renovation project that we did with no cost to the taxpayers. And that brings something near and dear to me, when the superintendent can be a tightwad sometime, but let me tell you something, no tax increase, that's the frosting on the cake, and I think that's going to add to students wanting to return to the Utica City School District. District, because we have so much more to offer. So accolades go out to everyone, and I know that it's going to be guided very quickly. Terry, the only thing I was wondering is, the referendum, that would be this year though, wouldn't it?
Correct. That would be in December of this year.
Which we've done in the past, I think we did in November, December, so wouldn't interfere with the-
Were we actually going down on the voting November?
Oh, we have to, yeah. Because we don't want to interfere that with the May elections with the budget, I mean, it's really a separate project. And I think, you know, once we explain to the public what this is about, I'm sure that you will have a good turnout supporting this effort. Is there anybody else?
Yes. I'm glad you're still around, Terry.
Thank you.
You've done a yeoman's job with our projects up to this point. Superintendent Karam said that if the opportunity arose, he was going to do it, so I'm really glad that this opportunity arose, and I'm hoping that we can meet it and fulfill, you know, his vision. I do have a question, though, so, and this may be too early, but when would the kids be exposed to CTE? Would it start in high school, or would it be?
We would continue with a transition process with Bosse's for the next couple of years until the facility was ready.
Right.
Then we would transition it into September 2024, and then we would start them in ninth grade.
Ninth grade.
Yep, and I would like to even look forward, looking forward down the road, I would like to have some type of introductory classes at the middle school, so they can transition into the high school, and then kind of they'll already, you know, hit the floor running. So the earlier we can start them, the better.
Well, I just want to thank you and your staff for bringing this to fruition. Hopefully, we won't have any issues with the State Department, the Education Department, and it looks like Bosse's is on board, so that's fantastic.
Okay, Don?
Yeah. I just want to say, looks like we'll be getting together again, Terry.
You can thank the superintendent for that. Long as things go well, you can thank the superintendent, because he drives a hard bargain, and I made a commitment, I made a commitment to the superintendent and the district that I would stay here for this project.
Yeah, and Bruce, I think that's a great idea. And one thing I see, and that I've always been a proponent of, you know, I always liked the sports programs, and the music programs, and the plays, and all that, because they keep a certain segment of the students in school, they get them to graduation, they get them with a degree, they learn something, and then they go out in the world. This is just another piece of that. It's going to keep kids in school that maybe now they would go to Bosse's, maybe they wouldn't go to Bosse's, but the decision now is going to be to stay at Proctor and learn something. And hopefully, that brings our graduation rate up, our dropout rate down, and it's just another piece of the puzzle to help the students in Utica. So I'm really happy with this brand.
Mr. Karam, the one thing I would ask, although Joe talked about the early grades, I would be curious to know if we can get a partnership with either MVCC or Herkimer College to continue on after the high school. I don't know the process and how long that would take to build that, but I think it'd be worth having those conversations.
Yes, and that's a very good point. We've already began discussing that, plan, or begin the preliminary step in planning that, not only back it up grade-wise, but also moving forward. So yeah, absolutely, we're all on board with that, we're already thinking about that, and you're absolutely right, that's a great idea.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on with this presentation, and we'll go to the announcements and reports. Student representative's not here. Maybe Mr. Karam, you can check with Mr. Gifford tomorrow to ensure the student representative is present.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, announcements, and I mean, PTO, PTA, student councils, chairs, Title I, UTA.
UTA.
Flares.
My name is Scott Rogowski. I am the new president of the Utica Teachers Association. First off, I think the CTA program sounds fantastic, and it'll offer our students great opportunities in the trades. I wanted to take the time to come here and to say a few words and introduce myself to the Board of Education. This is my 21st year of teaching in the Utica City School District. This upcoming year, I will teach 5th grade in the morning, and I will serve as UTA president in the afternoon. My UTA executive team and I will certainly embrace having a good rapport with the Board of Ed and District during my tenure as UTA president. The UTA executive team and I are ready and available to sit down and have productive conversations at any time. This past year was difficult and challenging for everyone. We wanted to thank the Board of Education and administration for supporting teachers and listening to concerns that arose throughout this unprecedented time. We also wanted to thank all the parents for their flexibility and assistance during our virtual and hybrid teaching sessions. It made all the difference when parents supported us at home, checking assignments on Google Classroom, and further explaining topics that were taught in class. It is very difficult to find words to express our gratitude to each and every Utica teacher for their hard work and dedication throughout this past school year. Our teachers stepped up during the time of many challenges. It was not easy, but teachers adapted by learning about the necessary technology and programs to make this year successful. Teachers spent countless hours above and beyond their school day, placing engaging material online, devising instructional videos, preparing lesson plans, and connecting with their students in new ways. Pending guidance from the New York State Health Department, our teachers will be eager to get back into a typical classroom this September to hopefully full in-person learning, hopefully putting hybrid behind us. As we all know, students learn best when they are physically in the classroom setting. There we can focus on providing a positive and engaging environment for students to learn. And then on a final note, as I'm sure you are aware, our contract expired on June 30th of 2021. My team and I look forward to negotiating with the district in the near future to get a new contract in place. Thank you.
Thank you. UAA Teamsters Local New York Mohawk Valley Buildings Trade. We'll move along to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Lapola. I have a couple of adjustments to my report before I recommend it to the Board for approval. I would like to withdraw on page two, the first item, the agreement. And I'm going to be withdrawing that, and then I'm going to add page 34, which is the resignation of the library media specialist at King School. Okay, so that'll be added to the report. With that, I recommend to the Board of Education my superintendent's report for approval dated July 27, 2021.
Do we have a motion?
Move it second.
Moved and seconded. Is there anything that anybody would like removed? That being the case, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 wait. I didn't know when I should ask it, but, you know, we have a number of people that are retiring with long years of service. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, and I'm not sure if anything has been done about it, but I'd like to see something done to recognize those long-term employees, either with, you know, some type of memento to demonstrate, you know, some recognition and appreciation for their years of service. It's one thing that we say something in a meeting, and some people don't care about it. You know, they don't care about mementos and, you know, signs of appreciation, and other people do. But I think as an organization, I think it's important to do that. So, you know, we have a number of people, 32 years, 29 years, I mean, that's a long time. So I don't know what steps, if I need to make a motion again, but I'd like to see something implemented to recognize these people.
Chris?
I was going to just say, what committee would apply? Let's bring it in committee and come up with a plan with whatever committee we have.
Whatever committee, sure.
Put it, just send it in the committee.
Policy?
Policy committee.
Policy committee, I would think.
Joe, you're up.
Me too, Joe.
Make a recommendation.
We'll let you pick out all the stuff.
Make a recommendation to the superintendent, and we'll roll with it.
I'm more than happy to build morale and culture.
Me too.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those approved?
Aye.
Opposed, it's passed. Reports to the committee, special committees. Bosse's report, Joe, hold on, Joe?
Well, I went to my first Bosse's meeting, and I have to say, it was very interesting. It looks like it's going to be a lot of work, and there's a lot to learn, because apparently Bosse's has two components of it. They have the one, which is like a school, and then they have the other part, which is more administration, and I'm not talking about like administrators, I'm saying they almost act like a quasi-education department or funnel to the education department. So, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, but, you know, they were, you know, they've discussed some, they're having some issues with their CTE, and they want to, you know, right now, they were, there were some members that were expressing some dissatisfaction that it's only 11th and 12th grade. And one of the things that they're trying to do, and they were at least been raising this issue at the meeting that I was at, was they'd like to get some kind of uniform bell system, meaning that every school district has the same, the same class bells, so that, because everybody feeds Bosse's on a lot of their programs. So they think it would be more helpful. The other thing is that I actually asked to be on the alternative education program, which I thought, you know, anybody representing the district should be on that committee, but apparently this was a first time for it. So I'm going to wade into that and see if we can address some of the, you know, the concerns. But I do have to say, I do find that the members there are receptive, and they're willing to discuss things, and their debates are lively, so I'm sure I'm going to truly enjoy myself as time goes on. So I can't wait to bring you something back, other than just my first-time experience.
I'm looking forward to it, Joe. You're saying you're going to fit in perfectly.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yes, I did have a moment there in the first, I did have a moment, so.
That's okay. We've served an awful lot of funding through to Bosse's, and quite frankly, I don't think that, and I'm going to say it, and I'm sorry you're on the committee, but I don't think our students ever got the fair shake that they deserved. And I think it's time for someone to have good, we have good representation on that committee, so I wish you a lot of luck. I think you agree with that.
Well, I'm there to try to improve things and work together to make that happen, not for the trips.
Okay. The Audit Committee will probably meet before the next meeting. I'm sure the postings are just about completed. On the treasurer's position, I'll forward all applications or resume to all board members, and the Audit Committee can review them with some type of recommendation to the full board at the August meeting. Superintendent did provide a list of salaries and duties and experience from surrounding districts, and hopefully we can deal with this in the August meeting. Also, Michelle, I was asking, I'm receiving a number of phone calls again, on the rebate program, is it still in existence because we fell below the 2%? Do you know whether or not people will be getting those checks?
I don't know when they come directly from this.
Usually, it's the fall?
Usually, end of August, I think.
Beginning of September.
Yeah, August or September.
Okay, because, you know, many seniors-
But they come directly from New York City.
Yes, I understand that. But I promised three or four people that I would ask at the meeting. Okay, let's go to buildings and grounds, Don.
Yep. We have nothing, we're going to meet, we'll put together a schedule, and like we have in the past, I know last year was kind of a bust, but we'll get that together. Now, the only thing I want to ask Mike, if maybe next week, some morning, if you have some free time, we could get together, I'd like to go through the new field though, and the fields of Proctor, so.
Yeah, just let me know when.
It's up to you. I'm available, anybody that'd like to go, whatever.
If you make an, you know, just let us know.
I'll call you tomorrow, then, I'll book with schedule.
All right, and then I'll let the rest of the board know.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else, Don?
Not on that.
All right, PEAC Committee, Don?
I have one thing on that, too. I was contacted over at King School, on the playground, there's a basketball court. There's no baskets.
Yeah, so our playground, we still don't have them open officially, because there's still some, on the school property, there's still COVID restrictions, so.
Well, I noticed the city of Utica, they boarded all their baskets up, okay? They've taken all that down.
Yep.
So I'd just like to see, you know, if we can get a couple of baskets up over there so the kids can use their playground.
Do they have different requirements in the city of Utica than the school district?
So the school district, yeah, we fall under some different guidance when it comes to playgrounds and disinfecting than the city does.
Okay, well, if we can't, just let me know.
But I'll look into it tomorrow and see what we can do. But I know we do fall under different requirements for the playgrounds than the city does, so.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question about that, because some schools, the playgrounds open, like there's no fencing. Columbus, you can't get in currently, because it's locked, but like Albany, it's wide open.
So right now, our swings are down at Albany, they're not, so the playgrounds are really closed on the school property. If they're not fenced in, we just take the swings down, they're really not supposed to be on them, because we still fall under that COVID guidance that SED and the state requires under that K-12 reopening plan.
So we may not be able to put baskets up until-
Correct.
-September?
Correct.
At least, yeah.
And that's New York State, right?
Yeah, it's the K-12 reopening plan. We still, a lot of that stuff is in place, people don't think, because all the masks are off here. We're still following all that six-foot rule guidance, three-foot rule guidance, mask guidance, all that stuff in the school buildings. It's still the same. Nothing's really changed for us.
The other thing, Mike, is, I don't know if it should be closed or not, but the gate at the playground over at King is wide open.
It might be open now, I'll look at it, it should be closed, but it might be open due to the, moving the stuff around for cleaning. But, yep, it should be closed.
Channel 3, Bob, Joe, Anthony, anything?
Well, I think things are moving. We probably should get together, maybe in September as opposed to August, because we've got a bunch of things to work on here.
Yeah, typically, typically, we'll meet when all the AV coordinators are back-
Right.
-and all our technology come September time.
Okay.
I do have one thing I think we should be focusing on in July, and that is getting our app onto people's phones if we have not fully populated it yet, because it will be very helpful in terms of communication. So I don't know what the census is in terms of the number of people that have that on their app, but we should be posting it on our Facebook, the link to it, we should be putting it on our website, running it on Channel 3, although you can't connect on a link, but I think we should do that, and then start to use the app a little bit more if it's possible.
Mr. Farrow wants a comment.
Yeah, so I think we, it's posted on the website to the schools, and on Facebook page, it should be on all those social media outlets the school has for the link to the app.
Do you think it would be possible if our media star superintendent, Karam, did a little PSA, and we ran it on, you know, some of the station, TV stations?
Absolutely, I'll get the PSA done, we'll get that-
Absolutely, I'll get the PSA done, we'll get that done right away and I'm an app guy now. So everything I do now is app, so, absolutely.
Absolutely.
My answer is absolutely.
Mr. Karam, does it work, does it work on your smartphone or do you still have the foot phone?
No, no, my pages are all, they're after construction.
Great, fantastic.
Okay, moving right along, policy committee, Bob?
Uh, no, we just, I recall, we just had something to talk about, but we're going to have a meeting, so.
Yes, we're going to meet about rewards.
Right.
The rewards.
And Joe's going to take me to lunch and talk about it.
Joe's going to take you to lunch.
The capital project, I would imagine that.
I'll get together with Terry, we'll start over again.
We'll start all over again.
I thought we had everything done, Terry.
And the diversity committee, Danielle?
Yes, I'm excited to get that going. I think we'll hold a meeting and see what can be started and improved upon, but I'm excited to.
I'm on that with you, what are you doing?
When are you taking me to lunch?
I was just going to ask you, you were a little past the draw because I was going to say, when are you taking me to lunch?
No, I don't, no, you're going to take me and we're going to talk about it and then I'll take you for ice cream.
What do I buy, Dan?
Nothing.
Unbelievable. Louis, I have one more, one more thing under health and safety. I'd like to make a motion that because of the problem, the accident that we had here at Kernan's School out on the main road on York Street, that we send a formal letter to the city of Utica requesting a crossing guard in front of Kernan's School to protect their students.
Sure.
I don't know if it'll do any good, you know, the city, we have some problems at times, but I'd like to formally ask them anyhow to give us a hand there.
Well, the problem is being recognized, so I think it's good. So there's a motion by Dan, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll get the letter out right away.
Letter out right away. Okay, financial report, Harris?
Good evening. I found no problems with any of the auditing I've been doing. I attached the extracurricular amount of money in each one of the schools. Changed just a little because there wasn't too much going on. And I'll be starting a risk assessment and I'll have that completed once the external auditors finish their audit because there's some financial information on there that I want to include. And who's going to bring?
Does it seem like you just finished the last one?
Yeah, well, it's been done for a while, but we weren't able to do anything. And one last thing, who's going to bring me to lunch?
Dan Drayce.
Everybody's bringing everybody else to lunch.
Nobody's including me.
You're sitting next to him. Any questions?
Okay, that's approval amendments, we'll take them together. Special meeting June 22nd and regular meeting June 22nd. Second, moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Continuing business, you have something?
Uh, yeah. We, as the board knows, we appointed the new principal at Jones Elementary School tonight, Monica Towne. And she's on Zooming in right now so that you can meet her. And I will also bring her here in person at the August meeting. That's Monica Towne.
Hi, Monica.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody, thank you so much for this opportunity and I look forward to working with the Utica City School District.
Welcome aboard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck, we'll see you in August.
Louis, where are we with our treasure? We got implications?
They posted it twice and the posting's going to be ending pretty soon?
Yes.
I believe so.
And whatever, and we're just waiting until.
Have we gotten any applicants?
We'll deal with it in August.
I think she posted it last Monday or Tuesday, so probably another week. So probably this Friday or Monday will be the closing.
Bruce, who's doing those duties?
Well, we have our painful vacancies. Our manager just retired, he's come back on a part-time basis to continue the duties for us. She's been wonderful.
Okay, as long as we're covered.
Yep.
Okay, is there any new business?
I have no business.
All right.
Okay, it's actually not new business, it's continuing business, I think. So at this point, the information that I've been provided is that 24% of children in Utica aged 12 to 17 have been fully vaccinated. There's 4,268 kids, 1,042 of them have been vaccinated. I'm also been advised that aside taking out the children that have been vaccinated, there's 39% of the residents of the city of Utica between, that have been vaccinated fully. And according to the Public Health Department, the age range of where the vaccinations need to improve are ages 25 to 50. We probably need to be in the 60% range. Now, there's either going to be, I'm advised that there may be, in accordance with the American Pediatrics recommendations, the state may recommend that everybody, students and staff and teachers be required to wear masks during school. In order for us to be able to make, for example, an application for a waiver, we need to demonstrate that we have better numbers when it comes to the vaccine. Now, this is not a political issue and I don't want to go down that road, but, you know, the recommendations throughout all kinds of, you know, all different strata of the medical industry, the immunology and all that, is they're saying that you need to have the vaccines. And I think it's going to make it difficult to make an application for a waiver if we don't get a better response in the city of Utica because that's the numbers that we're going to be judged by in terms of people being fully vaccinated. So if there's a recommendation coming down from State Ed that people have to wear masks all day long, you know, we have a chance to change that. And I'm advised that the county is holding clinics and they want to try to get it done as soon as possible so that the kids, if it's not the one shot, it's the two shots or whatever it is, so that we don't have to do that into the beginning of the school year. So I'm just raising the issue and letting people know that it's assumed it's probably going to rear its head at some point. And I know that there's parents out there that don't want to have their kids in masks and I'm sure there's people that don't want to wear masks, but, you know, the reality is if it's a mandate, everybody's going to be wearing it. And in order to avoid it, we need to demonstrate that we have enough people vaccinated to avoid it. So it just gives us something other than our people don't like it. So we need some assistance out there.
Danielle, you have something?
Oh, I just, I wanted to just ask Mr. Karam about, I don't know if it's making a motion, but a recommendation that we look into making K through 12 all Raiders. So currently, elementary schools each have a different mascot and I just think for unity and morale and culture and things like that, that I would just ask, maybe we can get some feedback from the buildings or the students or the student councils or PTA, whatever is necessary.
I can, we can put a survey out using Survey Monkey.
Another app?
Yes, and in the beginning of September, collect that data and bring it back to the board and then the board can, you know, make a decision based on that data. And I'll give a recommendation, absolutely. But I'd like to, you know, give a little time so we can collect all of this and bring it back to you guys, okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Can we have a motion to adjourn, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.